Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council meeting, Wednesday, February 17th, 2021, 7:00 PM via GoToMeeting. At this point, we'll ask Dennis to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge a manhood through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. Item number two, visitors. Are there any visitors on the meeting that would like to be recognized at this time? John, Clinton?
No visitor. I'm in regard to item number four appointments.
Okay, welcome. Anybody else? We're done. We'll move on to number three, which is approval of the minutes from the February 3rd, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I'll have to abstain, Karen.
Okay, thank you, Dennis.
I wasn't here.
Yep. All right. Moving on now to number four, which is appointments and reappointments. We have two on the agenda for tonight. First being John Clinton, Democrat Historic District Commission, alternate seat for term until 6:30, 2021. John is on the call. We do have his application that he submitted and all his information. John, would you like to say anything?
Oh, well, I moved back to town three years ago. I've always been interested in history and I served on the Old Town Witches Association in Santa Barbara for five, six years when I was out there. And I'm very interested in preservation of the older homes and the history of Clinton.
Thank you very much. At this point, do we have a motion to approve John Clinton, Democrat? Second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you again. And with a name like that, you know you're going to get appointed, so you really don't have a chance to, you know, think about it, so.
Well, a little side note is that my family's from Clintonville.
You know, when I was looking at the report, I said, John who? I didn't realize it was John Clinton, so nice to have you, John.
Thank you. All right, next up is John Madura for the Water Pollution Control Commission for term until 6:30, 2023. Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. All right, we'll move on now to item number five, Fire Department. This is the authorization to install an underground water storage tank at Hesser's Pond. I guess this is on piggybacking of the meeting the last time where they were discussing that at a different location in town. Brian, so Brian's on the call. Does anybody have any questions for Brian?
I do. Chris, you just said piggybacking on. Is this in addition to the one near the old schoolhouse or is this instead of that one?
In addition.
Yep, so this is in addition to. I didn't formally have all the information, so we didn't bring it up in the last council meeting. This is an additional site. It's one of the three I spoke of on the last call. It was approved by the Parker Rec Commission back in June and again in this January because we had to shift it over a little bit on the site. So we're just bringing it to the council now that it was approved by the board.
So Brian, what is the radio? So is this something that stores water, the truck goes, picks it up and distributes it? Or is it a storage tank that you pull from directly to fight a fire?
So it stays permanently buried under the ground and just like we would take water out of a pond or a stream, this tank is there to do it the same way. So basically, one fire truck will pull up to it, draw water out of it and either send it down the road through a length of hose, or it would fill up another fire truck that would transport it to wherever it's needed.
Okay, because I'm surprised at the proximity of these two underground storage tanks. I thought that the one that we approved last meeting on Airline was taking the place of this one because they are so close to each other. Where you have a third tank planned and where is that?
That's at the end of Creampot Road. So the ultimate goal is-
They're all kind of close to each other.
You'd be surprised. So each truck, you can generally pump generally no more than 2,000 feet. So the ultimate goal is to end up with a water supply in the non-hydrated area every 4,000 feet approximately.
So-
If you notice around town, the fire hydrants are located 300 to 500 feet apart.
So what about, I mean, I would have thought that one of these would go into like the Christina Court, Fox Hill, that kind of area up there. Are they wells or are they city water up there?
So up in that area, there are three fire ponds that already exist that were put in as part of those subdivisions.
And they are holding water and they-
There is one tank planned for that area near the intersection of Michael Drive and Fox Hill, which is not part of Phase One.
So I know that- Brian Christine Gopiel here. It might benefit the council if you can distribute your plan. You had the whole map with timelines for each of the tanks and their installation and maybe some information on which were the bonded projects from previous year and which were the the capital projects budgeted ones that were never able to be installed because the amount was never allocated to be enough. Might be helpful because there's a lot of new people on the council.
Yeah, so basically what Christine is speaking about is we identified about 25 sites in town. The first bond package here would cover the cost of approximately eight of them. The reason we chose these three sites first, like I spoke about at the last meeting, was because two of them are on town property. The one's on Land Trust property and it was easier to get our feet wet in the bidding process and working with contractors and engineering on our own property before we have to get involved with attorneys and get easements for private property and so on and so forth.
Brian, this is Tim Guera. Where specifically- How you doing? Where specifically at Hesser's Pond are we talking about?
Somewhere immediately adjacent to the parking lot. Once the area is formally engineered, they will find a spot. The challenge with it there is both the water table and the topography. So the engineer is going to take a look at the, they've looked at the site preliminarily and then we will have to file an application to Wetlands for review as well.
Okay.
Brian? Dennis Donovan here.
Mr. D, how are you?
I'm fine, Brian. Yourself? So effectively, then this will eliminate the idea that we'll have to use Hesser's Pond as a water source. Am I correct on that?
Correct. The reason we're looking to put a tank there is in order to get a site certified, to be accepted by insurance companies, it has to meet certain requirements. And we found that it's near impossible to get somebody to sign off on certain ponds, lakes and streams because of the drought studies that are required and so on and so forth. And the town hasn't done anything with Hesser's Pond now and they've been talking about studies for about 20 years. And we're just trying to get that area covered.
Yeah, I understand that and I think it's a good move myself because, yes, we have been doing studies about Hesser. The cost would be outrageous at this point to dredge it, to get it down to where it could be workable for the fire department. So I'm glad that you chose that site. I had a little concern myself. I'm glad that Carol asked that question because I was wondering myself the proximity to the other one up on Airline, but I do understand the reasoning now with the 2,000 foot pumping.
Yeah, and the the other challenge there is the change in elevation pumping uphill from the pond into that other area. By putting it at the Little Red Schoolhouse, we could cover south to the Vineyard and into the Old Schoolhouse neighborhood and up as far as Egypt Lane and Colonial Drive.
Very good. Thank you.
Brian, just, this is a little bit off topic, but has there been any discussion of utilizing the water main that's being put into the Equestrian Center to run a hydrant there that could serve the needs of that area?
So the Equestrian Center, we have a hydrant across the street already. And once they add the water line into there, it's really only going to be suitable for what they put on that property. The plan that we talked about when this went-
Weren't they putting in an oversized line there? They were putting in an oversized water line there, weren't they?
Correct, but it goes into the complex, Carol, so it really doesn't service any of the other surrounding areas.
Okay.
Well, just to touch a little bit on that, I believe Carol's point was that at one time, I do remember that there was some talk about that if we extended water further up to Rocky Ledge or whatever, that that's why that was made larger at the Morgan School for the intent that someday the water line may or may not be extended up to Rocky Ledge and then, of course, I would hope that you could also put more fire hydrants on that. Am I correct in that, Brian?
Yes, so what we discussed is the water line that you're speaking of, the new section that was put in in front of the Morgan School is 12 inch. What connects that in the backfield, the Glenwood Road, is only eight. The plan that the Water Pollution Control put forward was extending the water line from Walnut Hill Road on Route 81, connecting it to the Morgan School and going all the way to Rocky Ledge and then interconnecting all of the side streets. Two of the adults that we discussed as part of that project was to extend the water main from the end of Oakwood Drive and poke it about 500 feet through the woods out into the Old Schoolhouse Davis Farm neighborhood. But that's as far as it went. There was no formal planning because the plan never went further. And the other adult that we discussed was extending the water main from the intersectional Walnut Hill and Cow Hill south about just shy of the Tree Farm because currently there's a hydrant just in from Knott Road on Cow Hill that we could cover up to I-95. So the idea of extending the water main, a short stink down Cow Hill Road would give us coverage from there south to 95 to close that gap. But until that project moves forward, we have nothing else in the area.
Thank you.
So Brian, let me ask one more question. So Brian, if you were to put something in the north end of town, you know, Silver Birch, Upper Cow Hill, anything like that, that would be on private property, are you saying? That would have to be a negotiated land use?
So it's a simple process when the homeowner is on board with it. It's basically just like when you go through and put a drainage easement in. Usually it's established when they put the subdivision in. But most homeowners that we've, we've actually gone out and spoken to some of the homeowners that own property at prospective sites and they've been on board with it. It's just a little bit more clerical work on our end and attorney end and the engineering end to get those accomplished. So we wanted to go with the, for lack of a better term, the easier sites first to make sure the process is going to work and then move forward from there.
Okay. Thank you.
But to Christine's point, we could, I could definitely set up a meeting either with a couple of you individually so I don't take up everybody's time on the council meeting because I could talk about this for hours.
I would love to hear more about it, more about the specifics.
Yeah, it's very interesting.
Anyone else? All right, at this point then we'll look for a motion to authorize Fire Department to install an underground water storage tank at Hesser's Pond. So- Second?
Second, whatever.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Night.
Thank you, Brian. Good night.
All right, we'll now move on to item number six, which is the authorizing resolution for Kelsey Town Road Award contract with Dayton Construction. We have all been decided the authorizing resolution. Town of Clinton resolved this call, killed up. Town manager is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any documents on behalf of the Town of Clinton for the replacement of the Kelsey Town Road Bridge, Oberman and Stuckett Bridge, Bridge number 04119 and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. Do we have a motion to approve the authorization resolution? So- The second? Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Item number seven, which is line item transfer request for communications. We all have this here in front of us. We can see this transfer in the amount of professional services for the amount from 22,500 from Davis contracts 22,500. Sue's on the call. Does anybody have any questions about this before we move forward with it?
So this $22,000 is just for a study to determine what they need to do?
It's meant for a consultant to get the projects stepped up to the bid and phase. So it would be an evaluation of the existing radio frequency mapping. There's an opportunity to change one of the repeater locations. And then a determination on what type of equipment and volume of equipment needed to connect to the state's backbone and replace the radios that are no longer supported. So it's a consultant that gets us ready to put it out to bid and then it's in the capital budget for the $1 million.
Okay.
Carl, has anybody approached Demis on whether or not there's funding to do this through them? There was this substantial amount of money the last go around and wondering whether or not this could be tagged onto it.
We haven't gotten to that point yet because you don't have bid specs to get ready, so we're at the conceptual phase of trying to identify how the system here would work.
No, I'm asking specifically if there's money from Demis for the specific study?
That I'm not aware of. Most towns have been funding it themselves, but we can always check.
It might be worth just having a conversation with Jake Mackey about it just before we-
Yep.
Anyone else? We'll look for a motion to approve line item transfer request for communications.
So moved.
Second? Any other further discussion?
If there is the funding opportunity, does this line item transfer still stand? Or is it, I mean, obviously we're not funding it. We're just transferring the money. So we haven't approved it yet. Just want to clarify that.
It's a function of whether you've got the grant there or not. So and I want the timing of any grant monies, assuming that there's any funding. So it's a known action versus an unknown action.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. We will now move on to the Finance Director's report. Sue?
Hi, everyone. Just a quick review. You all have my January reports. To review the revenue areas, the total revenues from January from all sources was 15 million. Of this tax collections was 13.5. State grant revenues were 1.4 million and other town revenues made up the difference of $100,000. The tax collections year to date, January are 286,000, less than the prior year, 94.6% of budget. But noted, an additional 1.1 million was collected on February 1st, which was the last day to pay on time. Including that, with the current tax levies, collections would be 96.9% of budget compared to 95.1 of the prior year. The state revenues that I spoke of included the second payment for the ECS grant of 1.3 million and the town aid of 133,000. Those were the budgeted numbers, so we received both of those in January. Other town revenue areas, which include the transfer station, town clerk, police and building revenues while decreasing slightly for the month in some areas, continue to exceed in total the full year budgets amount of by 193,000. The expenses for January were $6 million. Of that, 2.6 million of it were the debt payments and interest that were due for February 1st and 2.4 million of Board of Ed transfer requests. Remaining $1 million of the six were just the routine recurring salary and contractual amounts. The other investment cash balance restricted amounts increased from 18 million last month to 24 million. The $6 million increase was a result of the 15 million of revenues and decreased by the 6 million of expenses for January that I spoke of just a minute ago. As well as, we also paid the 3.15 bond anticipation note off in January that was due February 1st. The band proceeds from the February issuance of the 4 million that has been spoken about in the previous meetings will be reflected in the February cash balance. So we paid off the note that was due on February 1st and then we received the proceeds in February, but that is not included. All debt payments for fiscal year 21 are now made with the exception of the monthly lease payments that we pay ongoing for the police cars and some heavy equipment for DPW. That pretty much wraps up the report for January. Any questions?
Sue, I have one.
Sure.
You, at the end of your report, it says Finance Department Project Overview and Part Three says, "Working on implementing management recommendations identified by orders." Could you remind us what those recommendations were and how you intend to begin or continue implementing those?
They put together a report that was distributed to the council at their meeting. Yeah, so you have that. We can redistribute that and then I can also provide a summary. There are internal control, basic recommendations that they made. Some more segregation of duties for how we distribute payroll checks and segregation duties and accounts payable function. They, those comments were on both sides of the Board of Ed and town. Something having to do with expanding the signers on a couple of our bank accounts. And that's pretty much it. They wanted to put out some policies which we need to start working on. For example, like the fund balance policy, they want us to improve that. And I think those were pretty much basically all of them, but there is a report that-
I have it. Yeah, I did review it. And you did, in your report as well, you said the contingency fund remains at 250,000. And then the fund balance remains at 19.8% of the fiscal year 21 budget expenditures. I just want to thank you for including those figures.
Oh, you're very welcome. Any other questions?
All good. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. Thanks. You're welcome.
We will move on to Chairman's report. I just want to thank you out there to Caitlin Denadios, who is the Morgan School. She's a senior that plays on the girls' basketball team and scored her 1,000th point for the girls' basketball team last night. She deserves a great celebration. My time, there's a lot of hard work that she's put in over the last four years, so congratulations to Caitlin. Following up on that, I know I mentioned that the last meeting talking about what we can do as a town to kind of get the word out on how we operate as a town manager, form of government. I'm going to bring that forth and put that on the agenda for the next meeting so that we can start having conversations about that and coming up with ways that we can get the message out and get the word out. It's getting kind of, you know, I think the issue is, is that, you know, a lot of people like to talk about things that go on with town. They like to talk about how the government, how we operate here, town manager, town council. First and foremost, nobody here makes up the rules. The charter makes the rules. We're here to abide by the charter rules that are set place on how we function as a town. The discerning part for me is that people continue to talk about things that go on in town yet, you know, we have these meetings twice a month and they're never here at the meetings. So what I'd like to do is put it out there to the council members because I'm sure you have some conversations with these individuals that, you know, that are out there. And maybe have them join us for a meeting. We have a visitor section here at every town meeting. And basically in the town council meeting, and basically they can come forth and ask their questions. And ask the questions so that they get answered properly. Okay, the worst thing that we can do as a town is have misinformation be put out to the public and have them continue to talk about it. Spreads like wildfire and it's inaccurate, it's false and it's misleading. Okay, so if people in town do want to know about how this town operates, the function of a town manager, the function of a town council, we're here to just, we're sitting in the seats now. This is what we're doing. We're occupying the seats. And the charter will dictate how we operate as a council and as a chairperson. Okay, so you know, the unfortunate part is, I don't know how it gets out there, but you know, the charter exists. But then when we have these meetings, nobody shows up. So I guess I'd like to put it out to the council members that if you hear stuff and people are coming up to you, feel free to invite them to our meeting. Item number two is always visitors. Join in, be recognized as a visitor and ask the question of the individuals that have the answers. Okay, putting information out to the public that is their opinions is misleading. And it sets a bad precedent. As we grow as a town and we're growing as a town manager, form of government, you got to start looking at the big picture, but all surrounding towns and individuals that will be looking for town managers down the road when we're not here, how you want Clinton to be recognized? So, you know, we want to make sure that we get out the right information and the proper information to the public so that they are aware of what goes on. And again, I've said it multiple times, you know, but this is new and it's still new to everybody. And then we, you know, do we need to do a better job? Sure, let's go. I'll step right up to that. Because again, we need to get that message out to the public so that they understand how it operates, why it operates the way it does. And they can get the answers directly from the individuals that are involved. Because putting misinformation out there leads to bigger problems in town. We always talk about transparency. We talk about bipartisanship. We talk about all these things. But unfortunately, they seem to be, you know, they seem to go by the wayside and we let it be together as a town and have an open and honest discussion about things that go on in our town and how our town should operate successfully for anybody in the town. So that'll be on the agenda next time and we can talk more about that, about how we're going to do this going forward so that we make sure the public is aware of how we function properly and that how we just basically, you know, the town charter dictates how we do things now. So that's what we're going to live by, that's what we're going to use going forward. So thank you for that. Number 10, Town Manager's Report.
So you have my written report. Obviously, as I sent out my email, the governor's budget has dropped. The budget presentation that was made last week. Governor's budget did include level funding for the educational cost sharing program rather than the reduction that was anticipated. So that's a benefit to the town going into the budget process. The governor is also releasing through his budget-
The governor is also releasing through his budget a number of federal funding sources which were earmarked for municipalities. Most significantly is funding that will go to the Board of Education. It's really meant for providing additional programming. It's not meant to replace any local funds. It's meant to be new, new funding for new projects. Uh, I think the intent is to provide monies for programs to recover the lost school time where uh, people were doing things remotely rather than in the classroom. Um, so that'll be funding that will go to the Board of Education for two years. Uh, once the federal monies dry up, uh, there'll be a question as to whether hopefully we don't need to continue uh, providing that additional support. Um, so we're using the governor's budget as a fundamental assumption that this is the floor rather than the ceiling. And then ultimately, when a budget is adopted by the General Assembly, uh, we'll at least at a minimum provide what the governor has uh, laid out in his budget. He did uh, have note for the purposes of our budget discussion, which will start tomorrow night, uh, there is additional funding put in under the Bonding Act to support the body camera dashboard cameras uh, that are mandated now by the state that's included in our budget. Um, that is something for us to have as a conversation talking point when we go over the capital plan uh, for police. I also noted in the report that the Green Bank uh, wants to change the servicing of their CPAC loans. The town has been in the middle of the process by collecting the debt, for lack of a better word, uh, for the Green Bank through tax mills for businesses that have participated in the CPAC's program. Uh, the Green Bank is now going to have its own loan servicing programs. So they're looking for uh, the town to sign a release, uh, allowing them to take over the collection process and keeping us out of the middle of it, uh, which we're more than happy to be out of as businesses collecting uh, bids for, for other entities. So uh, that's, that's something that will be signed to get us out of the middle of uh, collecting on, on loans. Uh, positive notes for, for loans that have been made in Clinton are all current, so we don't have to worry about uh, non-payments. Um, the only other item of note within the, the report is that uh, it seems to be two themes or a recurring theme about Connecticut finding its way to still try and leverage federal resources while not having county level government. Um, so there's a federal piece of legislation that's currently working its way through that would allow Connecticut municipalities to receive some of the stimulus money that would have gone to a county level government, uh, would be a direct pass through from the state to towns. We've got uh, feedback that's coming in from uh, our, our federal representative's office laying out what that bill could look like, what the dollar bill could mean to Clinton. Um, assuming it passes, but as with all federal legislation, it's better to wait until we actually see a bill moving and going through both chambers, uh, before we start getting too excited. Uh, and then I gave you the letter that went in from the RivercoG Director of Supporting Designation uh, on a more permanent basis for the COGS to have county level equivalency for federal programs. Again, a way to leverage resources, not creating a new level of government, but to make sure that uh, Connecticut is accessing all federal resources that we currently aren't because there is no county, county level government. Um, if there's any questions, if they have any answer. Other than that, uh, tomorrow night is a big night for budget reviews. Uh, we'll be chipping through a number of budgets, uh, starting the review process this week and next week. Pretty much just going to run that meeting the way we've done it last year, walking you through each and every line item in every department uh, to discuss what the spending plan will be for next year. And as we continue to get refinements in budget assumptions, I'll be flagging for you areas for production uh, once, once we get to them for where assumptions have improved and offering opportunities to reduce expenditures on the town side.
Any questions, Carl? Any questions? All good?
Uh, by the way, for reference, all of the managers' reports are now on the website. So there's the uh, year plus of every report that I've written to the council is now available on the website.
Thank you, Carl. Anyone else? All right, all good. We'll move on to number eleven, Town Council Committee Liaison Report.
I see over here. Uh, the Inland Wetlands Commission met on February seventh. They accepted the application for Baus Technologies, uh, on Nod Road to build a twelve thousand square foot industrial building. The Inland Wetland members performed a site walk this last Sunday on the fourteenth. Planning and zoning, public hearing, I'm sure you're aware of it, was uh, on February eighth for the Sterling Sands condominiums at one fifty one, one fifty three East Main Street, thirty two condos and two parcels and uh, second public hearing for that is scheduled for March the eighth. The project has been approved by the Health Department, Design Review Board, Fire Marshal and Fire Chief. Uh, DEEP has reviewed the application, is not in, on the waterfront or within a one hundred yard flood zone. The proposal is consistent with the town's P O C D. Petitioners oppose the demolition on the existing house uh, and would like to incorporate the historic elements into the uh, project design. The State Historic Preservation Office and Structural Engineer will determine if existing houses can be preserved and used as replacements for unit two in the existing proposal, proposal. SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office, is working with the owner to see if the house can be saved and used as mixed use. Project could be eligible for tax credits and the house is on the National Register, uh, Historic Registry. Again, that second public hearing is set for March the eighth. Uh, from our consultant reports, the first uh, the Big Y Building is to begin construction within the next two months, which I suppose is good news. There's continued work with RivercoG uh, and its staff on the town's uh, Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, the Regional Plan of Conservation and Development and the likelihood of a like, of a regional affordable housing plan. Uh, continued discussions with Public Works and the Town Engineer and the next steps for the LOTC C I P, which is the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program, sidewalk grant for East Main Street. Fire Marshal Jeff Hesser will attend the March eighth Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to share his comments and concerns about the planning and zoning referral process. Work continues on procuring a new land use permitting software system. And there's been increased drainage complaints into street and adjacent properties, including inland wetlands violations. The Land Use Office, I've been told, has indicated some potential developments are in the works. And that's it.
Thank you, Eric. Carol?
Um, the uh, Public Works Department had their meeting last night and there were updates as to the projects that are going on around town. Things that are um, involve the Police Department and infrastructure changes there. The um, there have been roof locks and, roof locks, roof leaks in various municipal buildings that DPW is taking care of. Um, they are working towards tracking the usage of the um, transfer station in light of the changes that are going to take place with Mira going forward. Um, I have to say their uh, primary concern is the lack of funding in next year's budget for the Assistant Director. Um, this is not going to be the time when I discuss this, but I have been um, uh, witness to everything that's gone on for the last two years instituting the um, the chain of command in the Department of Public Works. And when their budget is up for discussion, we can look at that further, but the fact that the Assistant Director remains unfunded for next year is of big concern to them. And that's it.
Thank you, Carol. Tim?
Okay, on February ninth, there was the Economic Development Commission Meeting. Primarily, the discussion was based upon the steep grant, which you're all aware of. Uh, they talked about incorporating a town signage and branding as part of the discussion. Obviously, there's a timeline where they have to begin work and I think they realize they need to get on it as soon as possible. There were two motions made unanimously passed. The first was to send out a general informational letter to all the landlords between Indian River and Pearl Street slash Stevens Road. And the second uh, was regarding, meeting with Carl uh, in regards to his thoughts about the steep grant so that they proceed in accordance with uh, uh, you know, the right frame of mind as far as he's concerned. So that motion passed unanimously as well. So I don't know, Carl, if they've gotten to you yet or not, but they will at some point in time because they recognize that their work has to get started on making uh, a presentation to the Town Council on what's progressing as far as the steep grant is concerned. I'm not going to get into the discussion about the manufacturing partnership. You all know that that's an ongoing project between the school, between manufacturing, uh, regionalization. And uh, it's just every, every meeting they talk about it. There's nothing uh, urgent at this point. There are a couple of videos being produced to uh, provide manufacturing base here in Clinton, more exposure to the public, to the school, to students, to parents. And, and that's being completed as well. Marco, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, is involved in that directly. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, give a report on the Police Commission that was uh, held a week ago Monday, last Monday. Uh, nothing really outstanding to report. The budget is progressing along uh, at a very even rate, which is good news, particularly in the overtime area. Uh, right now, the chief is uh, devoting a lot of time to the uh, getting ready for that new Citizens Assistance Program, which I think is going to be very beneficial to the seniors. I don't have a lot of information yet on it, but uh, they're getting around to finding out just what they'll be able to do for seniors. Uh, it's going to be a good program, I believe. And lastly, of course, we're still looking for a police officer. Uh, we have one vacancy due to the, an officer retiring back in January. So uh, that's my report from the Police Commission. I'd just like to add one thing with, to no commissions, but I'd like to just say hats off to you uh, for all the uh, information you've been giving out to the town on how to get vaccines. And I'd also like to give a hats off to all the volunteers who have been uh, working down there at the town hall to see that the individuals that are having problems getting appointments uh, are getting the appointments. And I think that's uh, a nice uh, a nice tribute to you, Mr. Chairman, and to all those volunteers. Uh, I've read nothing but good things about the townspeople, really appreciative of uh, all the effort that you and those uh, volunteers have put in. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And I guess, now Mike's on the call, so this is all revolving around Mike Neff. Mike has been the one that's, been the lead on this and, you know, basically he's provided us with the information that we can get out to the town and, and, you know, working together. It, it, this is what I constantly talk about all the time. This is how you work together. This is how you get things done. And that's how, you know, the town operates in, in a manner that we've been able to operate is that, you know, the work that people put forth and then the communications that we have out. So I mean, the, the big thank you goes to Michael Neff. I mean, he did a great job putting it together, uh, the numbers that, you know, he's been able to help and, and, and the volunteers have been able to help is, is uh, insurmountable. And uh, we hear nothing but good things about the Town of Clinton as it relates to that. So we should, we should take it out and, and, and work, uh, you know, work forward with that, knowing that, you know, we are doing great things here in town.
Absolutely. Nice job, Michael.
Anybody else? All right, we're done. We will move for an adjournment. So moved. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Paused, abstained, get your sleep. Tomorrow night's going to be fun.
You say so. You say so, Chris.
Have a good night, everyone.
Be safe.